Yes. Okay, we're ready when you are.
Good evening, I'm going to follow this meeting to order. This is a special session of the Mayor and Council of City of Bisbee, County of Chichester, in the state of Arizona, being held on Tuesday, May 3rd at 5:34 PM in the city council chambers. It's the special session, we'll talk this.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill. Councilmember Joni Jacaminos excused. Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie John.
Here.
Councilmember Mel Sui.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff Stephen Pocken, City Manager Ashley Coronado, City Clerk Kerry Bagley, Finance Director Alberti Chavez, Police Chief Joe Estes, City Attorney.
All right, tonight, we have one item on the agenda, this is a consideration of possible adoption of the resolution of R-2209, approving the sale and execution of the delivery of pledged revenue obligations, approving the formula authorizing the executive and delivery of necessary documents, delegating authority to return certain matters with respect to the fraudulent and declining emergency. Basically, about the possible bond sale for PSPRS. I'll bring this over to our city manager, who will introduce.
Okay, thank you, and good evening, everyone. Again, we're here to discuss like we did a couple of weeks ago, the sale of the bond issue to refinance the public safety retirement system debt that has improved over the last few years. Got a fairly thorough briefing from Mark Reeder from Stiefel, along with representatives from the public safety retirement system at our last session. And since that last session with the direction that we received, we have gone forward to set everything up so that we can go to the market with the bond issue sooner rather than later. And so, Mr. Reeder has asked to help and present that to you tonight so that we can move along sooner rather than later. So, Mark, I'm going to turn around and do two interviews. Well, thanks for the patience, Mr. Mayor, the council, thanks for the special meeting. I think that we shared with you what's the 29th, we weren't really planning to move forward as quick, if you remember, because remember that we're going to wait until the November election. And you all, I'll get you to the mic.
Or you can even grab the mic if you'd like, turn it on. It might need to be turned on, yep. On the bottom. On the underside, yep. There's a little switch. Yes, please, that'd be great.
Well, thank you. Okay. So, anyway, when we went to our study session, if you remember, because that's what it's great for starting the new office, you know, not was let's go faster. Let me take you to page one, I call this accomplishments, updates, and kind of a calendar. One of the key things was to give the best credit rating we could for the city, right? We talked about that. The city had never had a public credit rating. Stolen bonds at the public markets of the city of Arizona, we really get stolen credit rating. We have the information, it's still somewhat confidential, it should be released tomorrow on the title of the status. Really happy with the rate. We then have also spent a fair amount of time with a couple of bond insurance companies. And for a premium, we can sell our bonds based on a double A rate. There could be some significant, what we call net present value savings of that. So, been in discussions with, with two of them, and we're going to know the next eight or two on that, so bear with us. The bond market, I'm going to walk you through this in a minute, has increased a little bit. I'd probably say a half a percent since we talked on March 29th. The Federal Reserve needs tomorrow, as you all know, there's discussion of another half a point increase in the overnight lending. Some people say it's 75, some people say it's 25, there's an open consensus. I hope, and some of that's already big, I'll show you this. But bear with us, we're dealing with a moving volatile market. Other accomplishments, the city council adopted a general fund reserve policy, which the job on that, and will set aside and always try to maintain somewhere around a million four, million five in general fund, and help you, help you with your budget each year you're out, so that was a good accomplishment. Contingency reserve fund, if you remember, you know, you're going to have to manage this liability, if we do this pension bond, that we're going to talk about tonight, it's going to be 100% funded, remember? That's our goal. So, if we do this bond issue, we're going to wire a lot of money to the pension fund, and the city of Bisbee, for the first time in its history, is going to be 100% funded. And then, remember, we're going to level those payments out, okay? But what we talked to staff about, we're probably going to spend some more time with you, it probably makes sense to set up another, we'll call it contingency reserve fund. And funded, depending upon what you do with your sales tax, all the allocation, reallocation, maintain some money to build that reserve up over time, they'll maintain that financial flexibility you will need to potentially manage some misses going forward, that we hope don't happen, right? We talked about the actuarials, people are living longer, and sometimes the investment, we don't, they don't need their investment returns, and all the stuff that pension funds do, could result in us having a bad year, we do maybe draw some money out of that contingency reserve fund and maintain it 100%. So, you know, bear with us, we have a draft policy, we know you're still deciding as a council what you're going to do on your sales tax, right, Mayor? And how you're going to allocate money to your street program, and how you're going to allocate money to it. So, did you want, did you want to say anything?
Been a lot of discussion, and we'll bring it before council, but overall thought process, we don't want to raise tax, and we just want to keep it the same at 1%, and it's what happened now. Since most of the major strip clubs are done, we'll put that continuing on our streets and infrastructure, never have the, so unfunded line, first off, of course, the contingency. So, that's probably what we bring before you, and hopefully you have something coming to Steve, and let us know what your thought process is outside of that.
Okay. All good so far? Just want to try to summarize a lot of stuff that we've kind of talked about, and then I'll start working on our question, and we'll have to have some reviews and that we got. But I think that's a good, a good decision for you all to look forward. And that's what we have, we're trying to election plan, so that's, that's still a process. As far as our financing calendar, we're going to walk you through some updated numbers here momentarily, show you kind of where our savings is. But on this little calendar here, tonight, we're here to update the council, and if you so choose, you'll adopt it or we'll then delegate the authority of staff to work with us to go ahead and pull the trigger, okay? And we are moving fast. Tomorrow, we're going to have our final credit rating report, before Steve and the staff will share that with you. We're going to, they're going to post the offering document, the official statement, you have a copy of, on Thursday or Friday, so that investors from across the country will have that at their disposal, and will start to deal with it. And that's the document that they'll make their decision, either buy the bonds or not buy the bonds, it's a critical document. And so, we're doing that Thursday or Friday, if we get all that done, we could be in the market next Thursday. Manage our way through the bond sale, we want to do that in a moment, and then we will close it towards the end of May, first part of June, wire the bond issue to PSPRS, the public safety pension fund, and then, then we do, okay? So, that's pretty fast, and I think it's the right decision to go sooner rather than later. Thank you for your patience, as we did, and we appreciate it. Okay, so page two, I've probably got more slides in your own market than you would really need to, but on page two, over the left-hand corner, those are the treasury bond interest rates in the market, right? Because these are going to be priced off the US Treasury bonds. So, there's a two-year, and there's a 10-year, and 30-year, and you can see on the right-hand side, it's kind of, you can see how significant they've gone up in recent, the last 36 weeks or so. The 10-year. Page five is another, another index chart. Okay, any questions real quick so far? Am I doing okay? Okay, thank you. All right, then page six, we shared this with council last time, just a quick reminder, right-hand corner, we're calculating, we'll be updating this, because PSPRS had a good year, so you made a little bit of money, but it looks like your unfunded liability, tier one, tier two at the moment, somewhere around $21,752,000. You're paying 7.3% on the unfunded balance. So, we're going to try to swap that out for you, and get a lower rate, okay? So, I know you know that number, okay? Page seven, if you remember, and as you know, I like the chart on the right with the red bars, and this came from PSPRS, so if the city were to do nothing at all with respect to the unfunded liability, as you're paying back each year at 7.3%, you can see your payments are going to double. They'll go up 2.22 times over the years. Okay, so, if you look at the bottom of that, you'd be paying 51.4 million, because you selected the 30-year amortization back when you did this, some cities did 20 years, your city chose 30 years, and so that's why you pay all that additional interest there, so. Okay, and then the chart on the left-hand side, we just charted that same column for you, okay? Okay, so, City of Bisbee, a lot of numbers on page eight, basically, and I'm hoping we can do better than this, so bear with me, but you can see, we're going to have, you know, 27-year bonds, 26-year bonds, 26-year amortization, 22, really 23 to 28, 25-year amortization, okay? And you can see the principal payments in the second column, so each year you'll pay back principal payments, right? And then, if you look in the fourth column over, it says TR, that's the US Treasury bonds we talked about. So, if you went out and purchased a two-year, a three-year, you can see, the federal government will give you a return of 2.72, you see that? And then, it'll give you 2.89 for 25, and they give us a little bit each year of compensation for inflation. So, if you wanted to tie your money up for five years by way of example, right, you get about 2.95%. Any of us could buy those bonds, just call a broker up. Okay, so, since you're not the federal government, which is a AAA rated at the moment, they're AAA rated, sometimes they're on the watch list, if you know. So, the city of Bisbee would pay a little higher rate than the federal government, so we're saying 0.8, 0.8% on that 24.8, 0.9, 1% in '27, if you're following me there. So, then the column, the rates on the far side where it says yield is kind of an estimated borrowing rate for the city of Bisbee, 352 out to 535, okay? We've got some fours in there, so forth and so on. Okay? Okay, what does all that mean? So, on page nine, the rent, the rent bars is the do-nothing scenario, right? That would likely grow over time, because you're paying 7.3%, as we talked about before. If you go over to the left-hand side, if you see with a 5, the 5.35, so I guess what we're saying now, this is an estimate, you're paying 7.2, and right now, kind of an all-in 535 cost of borrowing, so call it 2% less than what you're paying PSPRS, okay? I would love to get you in the high fours, I don't know if we can. I would love to get you in the low fives. So, let's, let's go with this for now, because we're going to find out in the morning, kind of what's happening, and how that may impact your bond sale, but let's go with the 535 for now. So, we would issue on the left-hand side about 22.3 million, okay? And then, we're going to wire the 21.7 million to PSPRS, and I've got all of your estimated costs in the appendix, which we can go through. And then, we would issue the bonds, and we would level that debt out to the blue bars on the right-hand side, and the green is your savings. So, if you go to page 10, it's probably a little easier to read here, when we get down to kind of the net bottom line, on an expected estimated savings basis, if you go to page 10, you can see in the second column, column A, is the current payments, the do-nothing at all scenario. Column B is our new bond issue, our new City of Bisbee bond issue, so column A goes away, and it's replaced with column B, that's what Kerry and staff will budget going forward. And then, you can see, if you look in column B, we structured it such that you're not going to pay any more than what you would pay as a PSPRS, and we're giving you a little bit of savings in column C, you see that? Okay, and then, we're going to start to level this out at about a million 650-ish, and then, we're going to keep that million 650 pretty much level. So, we avoid that red line up on top there, so we can, we can fix the interest rates on our new bonds any way you want, but we felt, staff felt that the million 650-ish would be a nice fixed amount of debt service each year to address our PSPRS challenge. Okay, so, in column C, you can see the savings, expected budgetary savings of about 10.1 million, pretty significant still, even though we've lost some ground, with a present value savings somewhere around 4.8 million. Okay, which is, is still very efficient if we can pull this off, okay? You're about 22% what we call efficiency threshold, and generally, cities and towns will do these when it exceeds three or five. So, from the efficiency standpoint, even though we've lost some, some money because of the rising interest rate, because of the inflationary market that we're all dealing with, it still appears to be pretty efficient. Okay? So, then, just to wrap up here, when I'm almost done here, page 11 is the pledged revenues, remember? We talked about this at the last meeting. And we will add to that 4.5 million on page 11, if we just use the 21 audited numbers, if with our new sales tax going forward in November, we'll add back to the pledge, which helps us, but right now, it's 4.5 million, if the election passes, we'll have another 900, so we'll be in good shape there. And then, page 12 is our pledged revenue, our prior debt service, and our coverage ratio that we shared with you. And then, that pretty much rounds out my, you know, 15 or 20-minute update, and maybe I'll stop there, and I'll just let, let the council ask me some questions, and glad they entertained us. If that was helpful.
So, our interest rate would be around 5.5?
This, about 535-ish right now. And we'll know next week, and we'll know more tomorrow, but when we ran this a couple, three, three days ago, that's what we were coming up with.
Yeah. Thank you for the work you did. So, what, how much does this cost to us? I didn't see your cost in here.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, go to the appendix. So, unfortunately, bond issues were not cheap, there's lots of professionals involved. And so, to answer your question, so let's go to page one in the appendix, okay? And so, right now, we sized it as somewhere around 22 million 340, so we issued a new bond for 22,340, then 11.5 is higher, and 10.2 is police, unfunded liability portions, for a total of 21,700. My page one in the appendix, everybody there? I'm going to make sure. You got that? Okay. So, then, the, the cost of issuance, we're estimating to be 140. I think we have some detail in here on that, yeah, so, sorry to bounce around here on you, but go to page eight. Flip back to page eight, so with cost of issuance, we have, let me know, anybody there?
Yes.
Our bond attorney, Rick Rebertrawick, a critical part of our team, that does, very involved, has been very involved, all these folks have, based on their RFP, the consortium, which is the same, same one we've been retained under, is 50. Underwriters' counsel is 30. The rating report from S&amp;P is going to be somewhere around 32, within, within the last several weeks. The official statement preparation, the offering document 25, and publication, and trustee of 1,400, so we're estimating the professional fees to be somewhere around 140,400, okay? It's all baked in the cake here, if I'm well, in terms of the savings we shared with you, it's all included. Okay, then, back to page one, the underwriting fees is the fee paid to our firm to work with the, work with the city, and then ultimately, to sell the bonds, which is our next big job, now that we have all the math, and all the economics, and all the credit work done on the transaction, our next big responsibility for the city of Bisbee is to find institutional investors across the country to buy the bonds, and to do our best to lower that rate as best we can. And so, that fee is based on the RFI, the RFP that we were retained under, and we're estimating that to be the 4468. So, those are the cost of issuance that's included in the transaction. And I hope that was helpful, I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
Can I follow up on this? Comparatively speaking, how is this comparing to other, maybe similar bond issuance? Are we within cost, I mean, are we charged similar, more, less, depending on, can you give us an idea?
They're all, you know, they're all, you know, similar, in that they're, they're somewhere around the 1.5, 1.5 to 2% range, depending upon the issuer. So, you're, we priced this under the RFP, you know, similar in the other cities that we work with.
And this will depend, so basically, you get this once we get the bond?
Yes.
There's no out-of-pocket?
No.
Before this is issued?
That's correct.
At the best rate?
That's correct. So, let's say the market are completely self-honest, and we're unable to do the deal, which we don't, we're not hoping that happens, that's why we're moving, and nobody gets paid. People only get paid, professionals only get paid, when if we close the transaction? After we sell the bond, if my words are right, so.
But haven't you, I'm, you know, just, I'm sorry, I'm going to stick to this, but you just go on with the, with the higher number, 535, aren't you giving, maybe you can do a better job, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, you know, we do a lot of stuff behind the scenes, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the Council, I'll probably be on the phone at least two days solid talking about City of Bisbee, educating investors, right? I know a lot about the City of Bisbee, so I'm going to be on the phone, my colleagues are going to be on the phone, talking to major insurance companies, major investors, and we're going to, we're going to do everything we can. A lot of it's based on, you know, comparable sales in the marketplace, right? So, we've got to compare it to others that are going that week, so we're going to watch that very carefully. And I think a lot of it really, for, you know, a more rural city like Bisbee, requires us to really get in the room with these investors, that's, that's what we're going to do. So, you have, you have my, you have my promise, I think you guys know me, you have my promise, I'll work as hard as I can within the market constraints we're in, to drive that rate down, we know it's important to you. And it's, you know, very disappointing to see the rates go up a half a percent and lose, lose money, right?
Yeah.
But I think if we wait until November, it may have gone completely away, that's why we completely pivoted and said, let's go.
Let me say, it's been a ton of work, and I appreciate how much they've put on to it. I guess the one point I want to make, that I've been involved in this, is that it isn't a matter of, you know, overall, it's going to save us money, but it's not a ton of money, but what it does is it sets our rate at, what we're going to have to pay at 1.6 million, that's what we're going to pay next year, so we're not, that's what we're going to have to pay anyway, but a lot to send for the 25 years, and that's how many years we have left to pay on what we have now. So, it's basically a way that we can budget ahead and say, this is what's coming forward, we're not going to have to sit there and see 100, 200,000 up every single year, that's going to just keep us alive.
So, the other thing to consider, and which is good, that we'll be fully vested in the, the funds that come from the, from the NPLPS investments.
You bet.
So, we'll be able to get more money, we're getting nothing out of that right now.
Yeah, the 27% return only produced a few dollars compared to the, if we had the 22 million plus, the six that are in there now.
That's going to help us.
So, we don't, and, you know, I am hopeful that, and what I've been able to determine is to have a new management team at the PSPRS, that I have a lot more faith in than the old one, feeling I was pretty, pretty questionable, but I think, I think now they're being upfront and much more, don't you believe?
Yeah, we talked about this last time, we've done about 40 of these around the state, so that's been a consensus with our clients, that they, and we're pleased that they're more comfortable with the new management team, the management pension fund. And then, maybe, you know, again, depends on what direction you guys go, you know, if you have extra budget funds in the future, maybe you can get this off the books sooner rather than 25 years from now. And we wish, and we talked about this, we wish you had the budget capacity to shorten it, right? We talked, we talked to Kerry and Steve about that, you know, if you remember, Blackstaff shortened theirs six years early, if you remember, when we talked about Blackstaff? Other, other clients of ours who have a little more budget capacity, and want to get this thing out of the way, so they can use city resources for other, other things. So, in your case, if the, if your sales tax reallocation passes, and you direct some more funds into the pension, you want to, probably want to address the contingency reserve fund, and then, if you're having a good budget, you can always set aside monies and start to. and start to riddle this down if your budget allows. That's just something I know about the longer market.
Take about four to maximum five years to fund the contingency fund. To me, that's the safety zone that we need, that I need to feel comfortable with this. And that's why, the only thing I can, see if we can keep the 1% just where it is and use it as we need. We take care of both of it yet. More questions from anyone? Well? Would you like to say anything else?
I was just, excuse me, thank you, Mayor. I was just thinking, you know, looking at the graphs and seeing how we're posing to amortize over the next 25 years. It's kind of like what financial advisors tell their clients when they buy their first home. We feel that a million six a year is pretty much the limit of our budget capacity. But over time, hopefully, certainly over 25 years, our budget capacity will improve. And we might at some point be able to make higher payments. And at that point, which, you know, I don't know exactly when that is, but I probably won't be here to share that decision with you. The, at that point in time, you can set aside or pay ahead or do whatever and finally, you know, get where you would be if you owned your home for 25 years. But at the time you pay it off, the payment seems like little nothing. And when you first bought it, it seemed like everything you got. And so that's kind of the way this is structured at this point. And then, of course, that reserve capacity over the next four or five years building that up is extremely important in case there's a bad here in the PSPRS. But what I'm hoping at the same time is that being 100% funded with PSPRS is going to be like starting a 401K while you're making that payment. As your PSPRS being fully funded will allow us to take advantage of good investment years that will start building that capacity inside that while you're paying off the debt if you're amortizing. So, but that's kind of the thought process we used when building up this scenario. And I believe it's going to work pretty well. The only thing I wish is that we add the interest rates from six months ago. So, but.
You know, actuaries will actually smooth out those lows and highs. So the higher investment years when we're fully funded, we'll get the full amount. If it's not such a great investment year, that doesn't mean it falls off the cliff. They just generally smooth that out over a five to 10-year period. At least that's when I was in retirement system.
Yeah, but the bottom line is, worst-case scenario is doing nothing. Right.
The other one thing I thought maybe you could let me know is, is one, what's the call? You know, can it be called? How many years?
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going. We generally have about a 10-year call in there. I see maybe we can shorten it to nine. But, you know, we're still trying to drive that rate down, so somewhere between nine and 10.
I'd rather have the rate down than an earlier call because we're not going to be able to really pay it off in 10 years.
Yeah.
But we can sure use an extra couple of basis points.
Now, another thing, just to educate the council, what happens is, is we're going to go into a volatile market, right? Because investors don't want to buy bonds if they think in two weeks they can buy a bond at a higher rate. So sometimes we get in the market and investors are like, well, why should I buy those bonds from the City of Bisbee? When if rates are going up, I'm just going to wait three weeks and I'll buy another bond and get a higher rate. So we have to play that game. One of the things our firm is really good at is we want to get the transaction done, right? And this just happened to me in a city down in Phoenix. We were doing $15 million, a smaller bond deal, a $15 million bond issued. We couldn't sell the bonds. The buyers just said, we had about 12 and a half million sold, okay? But we needed, we needed 15 million to complete the transaction of refinancing. So my firm stepped up and we bought the two and a half million. You guys with me? Based on those market prices on the day. So we, we bought the bonds. The city locked into their savings threshold, okay? And they were extremely happy, but we own the bonds, people. We have capital. And so we took the risk and we sold those bonds off over a period of time. Took us a couple of weeks and we actually lost money on the transaction. So I'm not saying that's going to happen. We'll have to wait and see what the investor appetite is. But one thing we will do for you, we'll step up if we're close, right? We'll step up more than likely and get the commitments we need at the rate we need to achieve the savings that we need. So, no promises on that, but I just wanted to share with you kind of how that bond sale process goes if we get into a choppy or volatile market next week.
Yeah, we're going in right after, I'm sorry. We're going in right after a, you know, the Fed's just met. So they're not going to be meeting again for several months, so they're not going to see like, oh, well.
I think they have a meeting this week.
In two weeks, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
So in two weeks, we can hold off and not buy this.
That's right. We're hoping they're going to give what they call guidance, right?
A little guidance tomorrow.
Going to raise a half a percent and then what? They're trying to be very transparent, federally served. And what the market's hoping is, is they're going to say, we're going to bump it up 50 or a half a point. And then we're going to give you guidance on maybe how many more times we're going to do it and when we're going to do it. So plus, plus they're buying, you know, they're selling off bonds in the marketplace, if you remember, right? They're unloading their balance sheet. So, we have all these really interesting dynamics going on. And so, we're going to kind of be in the middle of it. But we'll just, you know, hopefully with Steve and Kerry and all of you are welcome to participate. See the investor demand, where the market is.
Tomorrow will be good indication because do give guidance. I mean, by the next month or so.
And again, I'm hoping some of it's baked into K.
Yeah.
The rates I shared with you, and we're hoping that some of that's already been baked in there. So, if there's an increase, it's not going to be 50 basis points.
No.
Right?
It'll be 50, 25. I haven't signed it.
So anyway, I appreciate you, appreciate your very good questions. And I want to share with you a little bit about the process and how it works. And we're going to work very hard for you to get the deal done. Keep the staff, of course, with you by our side. Of course, Mayor's and some of our native mayor appreciate that. And of course, other council members. If you're interested in watching, I'd be glad to. Be glad we could just answer to you if you would like. So with that, thank you. I hope that answers your question. And we'll look forward to continuing to work with you in the years to come. And we're knocking out wood. We're going to get it done next week. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Paul's on the phone. He's walking through the resolution. Paul, you there?
Paul Gales, are you? Are you unmuted?
Yeah, come on.
He's there.
Come on, Mayor Campbell.
Before, before we started, I think, do you think we want to introduce Paul?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor members of the council, Paul's with Greenberg Trowery. He's your bond attorney. He was one on the cost side. He's Greenberg Trowery. He prepared the resolution on your behalf. He prepared all the legal documents to drive our transaction. They're luminous. And our city attorney showed me the packets and he said that's why he didn't become a bond attorney. It's a very specialized field, as you know, and Paul called us a very, very thorough, a very good job. And so he prepared the resolution. Paul, if you wanted to share with Mayor and council a little bit about the resolution and the process. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. And Mayor members of the council, Paul Gales, Greenberg Trowery. As Mark had indicated, we're counsel to the city for the financing aspect of this. It's a resolution before you that approves the financing and delegates authority to staff to move forward under certain parameters set forth in the resolution. You're approving substantially final forms of all the underlying documents. I'm glad to describe each of those, though I don't want to put you to sleep. The basic gist of it is, the city is going to be creating a debt instrument that is payable from its excise taxes and state shared revenues. A powerful basket of revenues that investors are used to see, they like to see. And all the documents that Big Stack of Joe has accomplishes that. So again, resolution authorizes us to move forward. This would be the last council action with respect to the financing. We wouldn't come back for additional action, you know, in the form of a resolution. We'd obviously keep you updated on the sale process and keep you involved in the closing. But this is the last formal action by the council. And apologies for not being able to be there in person, but glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Just make note, this resolution says not to exceed 24 million, so that's in there. I don't know. If you read it, I have to admit, I read as far as where I have to sign. Then I kind of glossed up, I used glosses. Any other, do we have questions of? Attorney? I think that's pretty boilerplate stuff. It's not a little higher than maybe, maybe my background is, that's for sure. That's why I have an attorney over there as city manager. If they're okay with it. All right. So, I guess we can move ahead and ask for a motion, or do we want to have another discussion?
At that point, where unless there's been another discussion, the questions from council, staff recommends that council approve the resolution. So, I guess all you're looking for at this point, Mr. Mayor, is a motion.
Okay, sir. I don't know if you know this history, but I shot for this almost, well, not necessarily a bonding, but a way to sort of pay down our debt almost eight years ago. And it was sitting by my side. I don't know why you're, I was next, last, you were the first one on the. She was the last one. I was next to the last, that's right.
She was watching.
Yeah, well, she was always on one side of me. I got her on the right hand. She's on the left.
As long as she's not behind you.
That's right. But no, we wanted to tackle the debt and just to make a note, one of these, one of the costs you see in here, of course, is a little higher because we got an S&amp;P rate. That costs thirty-some-odd thousand dollars. Now, that's never happened before in the City of Bisbee. It was a two- and three-month process. Everybody worked really hard on that. Many meetings. They were asking a million questions about Bisbee. They wanted to know about us and how they wanted to hold us. And as you will find out, that we did very well. And that was, it's a real feather in our cap that we have done well enough that a big company, big firm as the scanners and polders is actually being a bond agent that we can go to the bond market with. Had that not come through, we would be basically toast. So, with that.
Mayor, just one more thing.
Sure.
It probably, she'd probably rather die than have me say this, but all of this stuff got where it got because it started in the finance office. And Kerry did way more work than I know she wanted to do. But I know at the same time, she wanted to get rid of that unfunded liability more than anything else. So, I just want to give the tip of the hat to Kerry for all the hard work that she's had.
Yeah, during budget time too. Just to throw a little whammy on you. But yeah, it's, it kept asking for numbers and numbers and she just kept, oh, thank you, don't give me, okay. I don't know how. So I will make a motion. I'm proud of actually making a motion because I'm going to sign all this stuff. That we approve Resolution R-2209 and grant the authority to the city manager and the finance director to work with Seifel to prepare and sell the bond issued for the purpose of refinancing the PSPRS unfunded liability.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution R-2209. Do you remember this is under an emergency? So we'll need five votes, I believe. Is that right? And we will call for a.
Of course.
We'll call for a roll call.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sui?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. That's a six, zero.
Thank you very much. You helped us chart the next 25 years of budgets.
I certainly hope so. I'm pretty sure of it. So, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council.
And everybody else. Keep us in the loop and let's hope for a good outcome. Move to adjourn? All those in favor? Oh, motion to adjourn?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A second and a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those aye, minds have it, adjourn.